I ask you to stand for the Pledge Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning and welcome to the May 5th County Commission meeting. I would remind you to silence your cellphones. There's meeting documents on the end of the counter next to Commissioner Bender. And Robert would have the listening devices in the front row if you would so need. We will begin with routine business. Item number one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve. Any additions or corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number two is approve the county commission meetings from April 28, 2015. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
A motion and a second, any corrections? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number three is bills to be paid in the amount of $481,638.2.
Pay the bills.
Motion and a second, are there any comments on bills? Commissioner Barr?
Madam Chair, today's bills, among several double-digit highway bills, there's an $83,000 settlement on one bill, and there's a $171,000 pass-through of 911 fees.
We have a motion and a second on the bills. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number four is reports, there are none. Item number five is personnel action. Consider a motion for approval of the routine personnel action.
So moved.
Is there a second? Any questions for Carrie? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Good morning, Carrie.
Good morning. I have two other items for you. First is to recognize significant employee anniversaries for May of 2015, and we only have three this month. We have Tom Henfley, who is celebrating his five-year service mark. He's with the State's Attorney's Office, and you probably know that Tom served many more years of service with us prior to that, so we welcome him back. Monica Hahnkamp, who's a senior property technician in equalization, is celebrating five years of service this month. And Michael Walsh, who is a deputy sheriff sergeant with us, is celebrating 20 years. So appreciation goes out to those staff members. The last item I have for you is to record the volunteers in county departments, which is actually for April 2015. Total 241, another banner month. Eight departments are receiving services from volunteers, and they couldn't do it without them.
Other departments that we do not list on a regular basis are volunteer fairs and volunteer ambulance, people that work for the county, not specifically for us, but for the citizens of Minnehaw County. So thank you very much. Any other comments on that? Thank you, Carrie.
Thank you.
Item number six is application for abatement, there are none. Item number seven is notices and requests. Item eight is notice from the South Dakota Department of Health for disinternment permit issued for the remains of Violet Katzerberger for Hills of Rest Memorial Park, Sioux Falls, South Dakota. Item B is authorize the county auditor to publish notice to construction contractors and unions of the intent of Minnehaw County to solicit help from the South Dakota National Guard under an innovative readiness training for construction assistance for the Sheriff's Department Firearms Range. Is there anybody here to speak on that? Doesn't look like it. Mike, did you want to just make a comment on that? I think this is something we haven't maybe done in the past.
I think it's a public notice.
Yes, it is. It's just a public notice.
But it has to do with utilizing the guard in a training mission to help us with the construction out at the reins at the gravel site that the county owns.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mike on that?
Make a motion to.
Oh, we don't need a motion. It's just, oh, we do. Okay, sorry, we do need a motion. I have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mike. Item number eight is planning and zoning notices, there are none. Item number nine is petition for compromise of lien. Jeff Bart.
Madam Chair, DPNO 74113. This applicant, the amount involved is $125. During the process of working on financing a home, it was found that there's a $125 lien on the property for IVC, which is involuntary drug or alcohol commitment for the applicant's son. It was recorded in 2010, and rather than deferring closing on this loan, she just paid it. So she's asking if we would consider to refund her $125. The fact is that these IVC liens are a very difficult issue, because when a person makes a determination to help a family member who has a drug or alcohol problem, the person submitting that request gets the bill. Now, if on the other hand, you know, Commissioner Bennega were to send me in for treatment, there would be no bill generated. And so it's really a burden for a family member to have to come up with the money on these things. And I think in the past, we've determined that it was really unfair, because it could be a matter of life and death when you have someone in your family who has a problem with drugs or alcohol. I don't know that the applicant is here, but I'm going to make a motion to refund that $125 and hope I get a second.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
I have a motion and a second to approve DPNO number 74113 in the amount of $125. Are there any additional comments?
Well, I'd make just a couple of comments about that. I mean, I understand the sympathy behind it, I just think there's a lot of times that family members expend money out of care and love for another family member, and I don't think $125 is unreasonable. I also frankly have some concern that we're not really compromising a lien here, we're giving a refund, and I'm not sure that that's what the law says we're allowed to do.
Any other questions or comments? All those in favor, Commissioner.
Does Kirsten have a legal opinion?
Would you like me to give one?
Yes, I would.
Okay. I share Commissioner Bender's concerns that there is not a lien before you, it has already been satisfied. However, well, looking at what you can do with a lien in our compromise statutes, and I provided a briefing on that topic, I think that's an open question as to whether refund is in the scope of actions that you can take once a lien's been satisfied.
Any other comments or questions? Do we need a roll call vote?
Sure.
A roll call vote. Commissioner Barr?
Yes.
Bender? No. Bennega?
No.
Kelly?
Yes.
Hyburger? No. Motion fails, three to two. This is the opportunity for public comment. If anyone would like to speak to anything that is not on the agenda, this would be the time to come forward. And I don't see anyone. Okay, so we will go on with regular business. Item number 10 is review the consideration of applicants for Neaha County service, ambulance licenses for dispatch service, area number five submitted by MedStar and Paramedics Plus. This was deferred from April 28, 2015. We have talked about this subject several times. I'll give everybody an opportunity if they have something new they would like to add to this subject, or if there are any new questions from the commission on this subject. So Ken, do you have any comments to start out with?
Just as a reminder, the area that is under discussion is in the green here, it's Area 5, and the proposed license would run from May 21, 2015 to the end of December of 2016. So that's the license period that we're discussing here, it's not quite the two-year license. Again, regardless of what you do here today, there has been some discussion about redrawing boundary lines at some point, and that's an item that you'll probably have to take a look at sometime early next year, and that in order to get it into the ordinance before you would issue licenses for the new licensing period from 2017 and beyond. And I will remind you, you're probably going to need to do that before September of next year, according to the way the ordinance is written. So I do believe representatives are here from both services. Again, like you said, Commissioner, you've had these application packets in front of you for several weeks now, and that, and people are here in case you have any questions.
Okay. Paramedics Plus, do you have anything you would like to add to past presentations? No? Okay. How about MedStar? Do they have anything they want to add to path from past presentations? I don't see anybody. Is there anybody, citizens, that would like to speak on this, on subjects that have not been discussed before? I don't see any. Okay, back to commission. So I look for a motion. Commissioner Kelly?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought we were getting a discussion.
You can have a discussion, or you can have a motion. What would you prefer?
Well, I'll make a motion, then have a comment afterwards, that we award to Area 5 to MedStar.
I have a motion for Area 5 to MedStar, is there a second?
There is.
A motion and a second for MedStar. Comments?
Ken's right, I think we need to relook at Area 5. I don't know how long these have been, a long time have been, the established areas and between the growth of the city and the outlying growth. I think it's time, because there's a long, it is, it's almost like a circle around the city, around the county part of the city with that Area 5. And I, it's a year and a half, I would like to see MedStar, we've had no negative reports that I found on it. We do have joint agreements, so that the far western part of Area 5 can be covered by mutual aid. And so I think the response times on the Code 3 and Code 4 can be, won't be a significant factor. Like I said last week, it's about a 24-minute ride at speed limit from Brandon to Wall Lake Corner. So I would assume with lights and sirens, it would probably be somewhere down in that 15-minute range. I guess that's, I think MedStar has proved themselves over in Brandon, and I think we should have awarded to them.
Any other comments? Commissioner Bennega?
I'll just have a few. Since we started this conversation, there's been some what I would call open items or discussions about arrival times, and how long it takes to get to certain destinations, and all that good stuff. It's never been about the people, it's never been about the equipment. Frankly, to me, who, and I've been on the Metro Communications Board off and on for over 12 years, I guess, it's about the system. And if the system works, then the people that are on both, in both organizations will make a very positive result happen most of the time. I had concerns, if you will, about the software communication issue, because there was issues with, at least from my perception, that could be a communication problem with our own Metro Management Group, but that's been answered, frankly. I've gotten feedback from people who are the experts and not myself. So I know that that software communication thing is a system that will work together. The last thing in this whole process that I'm still not real comfortable with, and I'm going to probably ask for an addendum to the contract, is frankly locations. The system doesn't work unless you got the right people, you got the right equipment, and you also have to have the right location. And if we don't have those three things, so that you got short arrival times, if you will, when you're dispatched, the system's going to have some, what I would consider some concerns. Again, it's not about the people, or the companies, or the software, it's about that location. And I believe that there has to be some addendum to the contract that says that there will be a western location, or a northwestern location, because I've driven that same thing that Commissioner Kelly's talked about, and it takes me longer than 24 minutes to get there. And 24 minutes in a Code 3 emergency is too long, from my perception. So if we could include the fact that at some point by June 1, or whatever, that we have established, whether it's a fixed site, or even just a mobile location site, that there will be an ambulance service in the western part of the community, either somewhere around the western edge of Sioux Falls, or even to the northwest, a little bit further, I would feel much more comfortable about putting anybody at risk. And frankly, that's what I would like to do, is make an addendum, if you will, or a change to the original motion, is that by June 1, we have established a letter of intent that says there's going to be a western or northwestern location for either one of the ambulance services.
Did you want to make that a motion?
I just did.
Okay. I have a motion to establish a letter of intent for a western location by June 1. Does that work for you? Is there a second?
Is that a?
That's a.
Is it a motion?
It's a motion.
But I had a motion and a second, or it was an amendment to the motion.
It's an amendment to the motion. Is there a second? I'd make a second. I have a motion and a second to add, to ask for an addendum that would establish a letter of intent for a western location by June 1.
Can I make just one comment? I made a mistake of my times, it's 29 minutes and 24 miles.
All right, I have a motion and a second on the addendum. Any other comments? Commissioner Barr?
I wonder if the potential providers would have a comment on that.
Is there any comment from the providers? Mr. Bauer?
Yes, I'm Gary Bauer, I'm the Director of Ops for, Detective Operations for MedStar. In our proposal that we, in the contract presented forth, we had already firmly committed to have a vehicle stationed on that side of the county. This letter would just fit right into our contract, what we'd already promised.
If I remember right, there was no definite time period that was there.
No, sir. But it would be contingent upon getting the contract, so we can sign leases and those type things. Just, Jay Mazer, the owner of the company, is in Florida, his daughter had, they won some kind of national championship for cheer, so that's where he's at today, or else he would be here, I'm sure. But that's kind of a fitting question on that, we've found potential locations already, got established, we just have to get the final, and there will be a truck there.
Any comments from Paramedics Plus?
Very simply, that would be more than acceptable. I believe we already proposed that we would find posting locations in that area already, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I have a motion and a second for an addendum. Do we want a roll call vote, or do you want to just vote? I think we can vote. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously on the addendum. Now we will go back to the original motion with the addendum included. Any other comments on that? I have a motion and a second to approve MedStar. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 11 is consider recommendations from Minnehaw County Rural Fire Chiefs for resolution to rescind the Minnehaw County burn ban. Lyndi Young?
Commissioners Lyndi Young, Emergency Management, and if I could just ask, I do have Mike Harstead from the Fire Chiefs Association here, and I would just ask him to speak on this instead of me today.
Good morning, Commissioners, Mike Harstead, President of the Minnehaw County Fire Chiefs Association. At this time, with the expected rainfall for this coming week, we are in favor of rescinding the burn ban going forward.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mike? Commissioner Kelly?
Maybe this is for Lynn, but what's the 30-day forecast on moisture?
Commissioner Kelly, I think, looking through a lot of the products, a couple weeks ago, I came to you and said we were in, you know, kind of a moderate drought area, that actually has expanded. But I think one of the things that we had talked about is a potential green-up, we have seen that, so that'll slow fire spreads. But definitely, some of the long-term forecasts still indicates development or continued dryness within our area here. So although we've seen Mother Nature help us out with our regular green-up, we need that to continue to happen. And, you know, just to let folks know that if the weather pattern continues, it's likely that the Fire Chiefs will be in front of you again later on in the season to reenact the burn ban. And, you know, the one thing I will have to say is, it's been very successful, we haven't had a lot of incidents, we've had great compliance by the citizens, but we need that going forward also. And one of the things with that is, if you are going to have a control burn after today, we encourage you to call Metro Communications, they have a series of questions for you about when, where, what, you know, how those things happen, so we don't have to waste the time of our volunteers in sending them out to a control burn that's not out of control.
Right.
So a long answer for a short question. It still seems that we're in a drought area, and that's why we're looking at it, but we do recognize the importance of burning off material for farming and other outdoor uses that the county has.
Well, I respect the Fire Chiefs' decision, what frightens me a little is that still, that we're still in a drought area, and that, you know, all of a sudden, in two or three weeks, we haven't had any moisture again. They keep saying it's coming, but I never see it. So that's where my reservations come, is I'd rather err on side of safety on it.
Yeah, and like I said, this was unanimous decision even last week, because of posting in Agenda Times, we weren't able to get it on. So it is still a unanimous decision, they feel with the compliance and the fact that we've had a green-up, we're looking at some rain the next couple of days, that this is the right thing to do at the time.
Okay. Any other questions for Lynn? Look for a motion to approve.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to lift the burn ban in Minnehaw County. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 12 is consider resolution to participate in the South Dakota Department of Transportation Bridge Inspection Program. D.J. Boothey?
Good morning, Commissioners, D.J. Boothey, Highway Superintendent. Every year, we do a certain number of bridge inspections through a consultant that is hired by the State Department of Transportation. This year is our lower number of inspection year, and we're proposing to the DOT that we actually do roughly half of the inspections this year, even though it is our lower year, so we can get on a more predictable cycle, where we do half of them every year. This resolution before you today notifies the state that we would like to continue using Banner Associates as our engineering consultant for the bridge inspections, and they will go back to Banner Associates after receiving this negotiated contract, and then send that contract to us for concurrence. And at that time, we'll know how much it costs. But at this time, we're just approving a resolution notifying the DOT that we would like to continue using Banner Associates.
Any questions for D.J.? Is there a motion?
Move for approval, second.
A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Item number 13 is consider a bid award for 11 enhanced ballistic vests for the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Department. Bid opening was April 29. Kristen Trana.
Good morning. I'm Kristen Trana with the Minnehaw County Sheriff's Office. Like she just said, we opened the bids last week for the enhanced ballistic vests, or for the SWAT team. Alamar uniforms came in with the lower bid, both of the bids were for exactly the vest as specified, and we would like to award that bid to Alamar uniforms.
And those bids were very close. Are there any questions for Kristen?
I have a question. Do our officers wearing outdated obsolete vests at this time?
They are currently still within the standards of being.
Protective.
Protective, yes. This is the year that they would expire by NAJ standards, so that's why we budgeted to replace them at this point.
Thank you.
Questions or a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the bid award for ballistic, enhanced ballistic vests. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 14, thank you, Kristen. Item number 14 is authorize approval for a contract between Minnehaw County and the Westlaw for Legal Research. Sarah, good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners, sir, Show State's Attorney's Office. Back in December 2013, we asked you to sign a three-year contract with the Westlaw. It has come to our attention through some new attorneys that have come into our office that there was another software program out there that might be more beneficial to the State's Attorney's Office. That's why, while we signed a three-year contract last time, we were changing the software, so this will be a new three-year contract, and it did drop our price a little bit over the three years, so it will still be within budget.
Any questions for Sarah? Look for a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
A second. A motion and a second, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 15 is authorize a chairman to sign a lease agreement between Minnehaw County and Dakota abilities for the administration building lunch snack bar operation. Ken McFarland.
Good morning, Commissioners. As you know, we've had a lease agreement with Dakota abilities since November of 2005, and Dakota abilities operates the coffee shop slash lunchroom down on the first floor of the county administration building. And one of the nice things about this relationship that we have with Dakota abilities is that they use this as a work site for their clientele who reside within Dakota abilities. The lease that you have before you would extend that arrangement for another three years, under the same terms and conditions that have existed since 2005. It's a $1 lease for them to be there, and again, they assume all of the operational costs for operating that lunchroom downstairs. I want to tell you in all the years that I've been here, that this has probably been one of the most successful and rewarding relationships that we've had with a nonprofit, and that those folks that work down in Dakota abilities have really become part, I think, of the county family. They almost consider themselves to be county employees when you go down there and talk to them. And it's been a hugely successful operation. I will also remind you, we started that operation through an RFP process, because we had lost, you know, the vendor that we had with the South Dakota Department of the Blind, and that, who originally operated it. So it's been a very win-win relationship that we've had with Dakota abilities, and I would strongly urge you to approve the lease extension to keep them here, because they have really great lunches, and I've eaten a lot of them.
Any questions for Ken?
Madam Chair, I would just comment that it is a great place to go to. The food is good, it's modestly priced, and, you know, you can tell that people are happy working there, and people are happy having coffee there, et cetera.
It's one of Dakota abilities' most successful work sites in the city.
Look for a motion.
So moved, second.
I have a motion and a second to authorize the lunch snack bar to go on. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign, motion passes unanimously. Item number 16 is Minnehaw County Commission Liaison assignment reports. Are there any reports? Okay, is there any new business?
Madam Chair, I just would comment that Erin Sertzko was the winner of an award at MB, and deserves accolades.
She does, and I have it down as old business, so I was actually going to say the same thing. She won the Young Women of Achievements. Did she stand in the back? Congratulations again, Erin. Oh, that's right. If there's no other new business, I will go on.
I've got more.
One more new business?
Since two of you, no, the liaison reports, since two of you were missing last week. I can't remember when we went to pure, but I guess it was a week ago, Monday. We did get out, there was Michelle, Ken, Jeff, and myself, and we went up, and we did have to testify before the E-Board, which descends the, decides the summer studies that will be done. And we were successful in getting ours passed, so it's one of two out of 19 or 20 that were proposed.
And what they will be looking at is county funding, which we've been asking for for years, so very excited that they have decided to go forward with, and review county funding with law enforcement, I think, kind of as a target area, correct?
Yeah, and a whole host of things.
There are a host of things to look at.
They are, and we, if you look at the scope of the study, they will be looking at things associated with county responsibilities in the area of law enforcement, non-law enforcement related activities, funding streams, county organizations, the level of shared and joint cooperative ventures that we have with other units of government, and that so, they are, it's going to be the whole gamut, and that, and I think that they typically have three to four sessions between now and November, and until. and until they figure out if there's any legislation to come out of that summer study.
Very good.
So it's going to be an intense summer for who's ever gone up there to...
Figure that out. Very good. Is there any other new business?
I would just comment on that, that although I drove up there with everyone, the reason that it got through is because I didn't say anything to the committee.
Well, thank you for being quiet, then. Old business.
Wait. Ms. Sertska is now in the room.
Yes, I was going...that's on my list of things, is to congratulate Erin. She was on the Tribute to Women this last week. She was awarded the Young Women of Achievement, so congratulations, Erin. And there was a pretty good slate of professionals in that category, and Erin beat them all out. And the other one was also to congratulate Mike Miller from the Public Defender's Office. He'll be graduating from the Leadership Sioux Falls graduation tomorrow, so congratulations to Mike, too. Is there any other old business? Then I would look for a motion to adjourn into executive session for personnel and legal.
And litigation.
And legal and litigation. Is there a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor say aye. Aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion passes unanimously. We are adjourned.